Good morning, everybody. Excuse me. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our regularly scheduled watershed committee meeting and special meeting of the board of directors for Thursday, December nineteenth. Terry roll call, please.
Director Ronji Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Jed Smith and Chair Matt Sampson.
Here.
And Director Mayor will be out.
Great. Thank you very much. Any public comments on the agenda items?
No, not on the agenda.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Chair Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment on non-agenda matters.
Yes, we have two. The first speakers are Andrew Levine and Larry Minnigus.
Hello there. Thanks for having me today. With respect to the pilot programs, I'd like to take a step back and let's make sure we don't get stuck in the weeds on this. Since the initiation of the recreation planning process three years ago, Marin Water has been the model public agency. Amazing work by staff led by Sean Horn has been some of the best public interaction I've seen an agency do in trying to manage watershed. The process was open, thoughtful, collaborative, and science-based. Dozens of meetings were held with hundreds of people, thousands of pages of documents were produced. And there were members of the public in these meetings as well as environmental consultants, professionals of all types. Eventually, these documents were developed and revised collaboratively, and we reached consensus on a solution that wasn't perfect for anybody, but really took into account all of those hundreds of participants' feelings, comments, and thoughts. And it was a good solution. However, a small group of folks who feel entitled to mandate what happens on the mountain are trying to change that. The lawsuit demonstrates their bad faith participation in that public process. And they're not interested in collaborating or reaching consensus. It's their way or the highway. That's what's happening there. Effectively, what the small group is trying to do is subvert the district's public open process. They're not only wasting the district's money for legal defense, they're wasting the thousands of hours that have been put into this by district staff, all the money the district spent on this, the hundreds of people who have been working diligently and participating in this for three years. They're trying to silence the voices that don't match their personal preferences. So basically, I'm just asking the district to do not capitulate to this extortion. If you stop fighting for this pilot, you erase years of work. And you're going to ignore the public voices, the people who voted the board in and who participated and spent their time and took time off work to do things like this, middle-of-the-day meetings and things like that. So I don't want you to empower the bad faith participants to do this again and again. Again, thank you for your efforts on truly public participation and cutting-edge management of your watershed that involves the public and all the people involved. And I'm optimistic that you won't let.
Thank you. For your time, Mr. Larry Minnigus, please.
Good morning. I respectfully disagree with the last speaker, and we'll just leave it at that. I want to address the newspaper this morning and Director Smith's quote, where he says, "I see us in an emergency right now," and that's a significant quote to make publicly. "We need to start taking things off the table, and we need to focus our efforts and increase our water supply as soon as possible." And to that, I want to suggest that it's clear that Suluhuli will come off the table, and I hope sooner rather than later. And I hope in January that it'll be officially taken off the table so that the fine people of Hicks Valley can relax a little bit. I might suggest that we look at spending more money in, right now, we're looking at a phased approach for the pipeline, which is, if I recall, in phase four, we would look at the Nakasio extension. And I might suggest looking at building out from both sides simultaneously and building the extension simultaneously. Perhaps putting off electrification of Suluhuli in favor of speeding up the process of getting a connection between Katari and our reservoirs. And it might make sense to build out both pieces at the same time. I just want to make that as a suggestion that might be looked at. Yes, it's going to be more expensive in the front end, but in the long term, we might be more resilient more quickly this way. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great. Thank you. Move on to regular agenda items, item A, and that's going to be a motion to recommend, excuse me, to approve the meetings from last watershed committee. Do we have any public comment?
There are none.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Chair Sampson.
Yes. Moving on to item B, Azalea Hill project update. Sean Horn.
Good morning, committee members. Sean Horn, Director of Watershed Resources. I'm joined today with John Fouchet, our Maintenance Supervisor on the watershed, and Carl Sanders, our Natural Resource Program Manager. We put together a presentation for you to give you an update about this important project. So the board adopted the Azalea Hill Trail Restoration Project in May of 2019. And since that time, the district's been initiating implementation of the project and over multiple phases. And we're going to provide an overview of what that looks like and some of the funding that we've brought to support that. So I'll give you some background about the project, and then I'm going to hand it to John Fouchet to give you an update on recently completed work and how we've been moving that forward. And then Carl's going to give you a brief summary of the environmental compliance that supports it and then go through next steps and when we hope to start opening different sections of the trail. So Azalea Hill Trail, for some background, there's three phases. The green line on the upper side of the screen is the hiking route and equestrian route. The yellow line is Phase Two, which was the old Fisherman's Trail, and Phase Three Liberty Gulch, where we've been spinning the bulk of our work this last year. All those dots are stream crossings that we're improving along the trail corridor. We initiated this project on the green section, actually doing some of the hiking trail improvements. And then we've been doing surveys since that time to look for a route that would be appropriate to connect to the top of Azalea Hill.
Sean, when you say hiking, that's the hiking equestrian?
Hiking equestrian, yeah, thank you. And then on the hatched area, there's about 4.4 miles of social trail that this project is trying to restore and trying to formalize that single hiking route on the top of the Azalea Hill. And in doing that, we hope to not just only improve habitat for rare and sensitive plant species, but improve water quality from eroding trails that are developed from just kind of folks exploring the top of that area and creating social trails that weren't designed to withstand the use. So this is the project we're going to give you an overview on. We've gotten a number of funding sources to advance this project. One of the partnerships we have is with the California Conservation North Bay to do some of our trail work. And we're fortunate that they have access to grant funding that districts like us do not for workforce development specifically. And so we got a grant of $225,000 for CC&amp;B crews to work on this project. So we are kind of a project sponsor for their crews, and that brought a lot of labor to help us build and do sections of this. And that was specifically for the Phase Two, where we did a number of bridges over some of the smaller crossings there, and they were critical in getting materials out to those sites. We also secured a large grant from the Regional Trail Program, which is administered through state parks of about $850,000 to complete geotechnical work for some of the bridges and a retaining wall feature that we'll show you here in a minute. We also got a small grant from the EMIG Trust in the amount of $50,000, which we matched with the Mount Tam Fund, which helped us actually build the Bullfrog Bridge. And that was the first structure we put in so that we could gain access with equipment to the other phases of the project.
Sean, can you remind us what the EMIG acronym stands for?
EMIG is a gentleman that left a trust for the Mount Tam area generally, and it was his last name.
Great, thank you.
This, we also secured a donation in collaboration with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. We had an AmeriCorps program, and it's kind of their capstone project. They worked with MCBC to do a fundraising event that helped fund for materials of one of our small bridges that we constructed on the project. So with that, I'm going to hand it to John. He's going to provide you with an overview of some of the bridges we built in Phase Two and then walk you through what we've completed in recent months.
Good morning, Board. Jonathan Fouchet, Watershed Maintenance Supervisor, working at a Sky Oaks Ranger Station. So back in 2019, when the Azalea Hill project was adopted, it became obvious that the priority was getting across that Bullfrog Creek, that span. It was a large span. It was a large span, especially for our crew. We enlisted the help of district engineers and some bridge consultants. We came up with an 80-foot steel girder bridge. Engineering helped us figure out the footings, the abutments, and the wing walls, and our crews did all that work in-house. And then November 2020, the bridge was delivered prefab. We had a large crane install it with our help, and it was a big success. We've done some associated kiosks and signage at the site as well. So that was, you know, to kind of the gateway to all the work, that bridge had to get in. That being said, there's been five additional timber frame bridges to the United States Forest Service spec. Glulam girders, all rated for 5,900 pounds. The rationale for that was a mini excavator was going to get across these and a UTV for protection staff patrol and medical aids and emergency response. Training. We partnered with Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewards. They're a leader in the latest trail building techniques and best management practices. They led a series of trainings for district staff, both permanent seasonal staff, interns, Grizzly Corps, and the Ranger Trainee Program. And so a lot of important training was held. These slides kind of show rolling dip construction, rock crossing, installation, and tread work and improvements. I'll be talking more about that later. They really, we really instilled a light-on-the-land approach. This is a very sensitive area out here. Serpentine soils, a lot of rare endemic plants. And so that was, the light-on-the-land approach was a priority for us.
And I'll just add really quick, the trail training that we've been doing, we've been doing this for a couple of years now with the Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship. It's been a huge lift for getting capacity within our own crews to support some of the fieldwork that CC&amp;B and CCC do on the watershed. And we did this training really focused on stream crossings this last year because we had about 20 or so that we were going to do as part of this Phase Three. So this was a great kind of project to focus on for the training this year.
Have you guys been happy with all the guidance you've been getting?
They've been great. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, National Trails Day, it's an annual event the district is involved with. This was last June 2024. We had well over 40 volunteers come out. And it was an impressive cross-section of the community. We had hiking groups, cyclists, cross-country teams, running clubs, equestrian groups, all working together for a common goal. And so the photos show the safety briefing and kind of the plan for today. We broke up into, I think it was four or six crews doing various work dependent on interests and skill set and needs. So we did some brushing. We did tread constructions. Did build a causeway down below in some of the wet sections and then rock crossings, like Sean said, and then lunch at the end. So it was a really, it was a really good event. Volunteer events, these are some great photos. We strive for one a month. There's actually one today, and there's one coming up on January 11th. It's an important labor source for us. We get our message out. We get a lot of good work, and we hear a lot of feedback and interest and concerns. And like I said earlier, it's like the common goal to get, you know, public access in this really special place. So this was one of the helping us build the bridge. We put in the abutments, the footings, the wing walls, and the girders. And then volunteers helped us with the decking, the posts, and the rail. All-weather conditions, 12 months a year. There was even a boat. It was a good event. Good events. Like Sean mentioned earlier, the districts are reliant on these labor sources, both the CC&amp;B and the state SEES. A lot of this rock, most of this rock actually is sourced on-site. It's labor-intensive in a sensitive area, like I talked about. So it's tricky to get, you know, as much rock as you need to these sites. We also utilized Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewards to help lead these crews as well in the spikes that the SEES would come in. They would camp at Sky Oaks. Their crew leaders would serve as technical advisors. And we learned that this really maximized not only the quality, but the quantity of work, and it's been a great partnership for us. And some great photos here, Alpine Lake on a beautiful meadow. Stream crossings, I think that plan identified 25. We've completed 20. This really shows, you know, kind of the before, the during, and after. And we're trying to get the creeks back to where, they're not going down our trail. They're not creating erosion. They're not creating salt that goes directly into the reservoir. Alpine is quite close to here. So you have to excavate. You have to get the rock there. You have to excavate the subgrade, build it back up, and form it back, and then the fill slope with the rip rap and the energy dissipation. And in theory, these, once they're built, they maintain themselves. They're keeping silt out of the creeks, and a lot of user groups can use these. 12 months a year is the goal. Like Sean mentioned earlier, there was a significant retaining wall near Belinas Fairfax Road. The district engineers helped us design and construction management helped us manage. Piazza Construction won that contract. It was a 103-foot soldier pile wall with concrete precast lagging. A big project for us, quite steep. You can see the culvert pipe on the hill that was coming off of Belinas Fairfax Road. So that was a challenge. That was a pinch point. Like I said, it was narrow, steep. And so that was kind of a big accomplishment to finally climb up and out to where it meets the right-of-way and the road there.
And this project had been eroding this section of the trail, had eroded so bad that you could not actually cross it. And so I think it was the big winter of 2020 or 2020 that we had some atmospheric rivers that increased the erosion even further. So this was a big project to get that width back for multi-use. We do have some improvements that we still want to do to reduce the grade that takes you out of this retaining wall feature and up to Belinas Fairfax Road. So it's a little steeper than we would like it. So this summer, we're going to be making some adjustments to that. So a little bit more work to do on this site before it's kind of to that final stage.
And so these really, these are great photos showing the two bridges that we built. It shows the form work that was done, both either Site Nine and up top, near the, just below the retaining wall, that Piazza Construction did as well. The photo, Site Nine, all that concrete was mixed by hand with generators and portable mixers. 10 cubic yards on each sides, a total of 20 cubic yards. We pump water out of Alpine Reservoir. So it's a big project for us, and thankfully, it's completed. And yeah, there's a great photo of the trail, Jay, that was helped putting the decking on that day.
And all of that concrete was brought out by hand, so, or by boat. And so that was a significant effort and, you know, was part of the reason why it took, you know, a little bit more time for each of these features to be constructed. So I'm going to hand it to Carl to talk about some of the early decommissioning and ongoing decommissioning we're doing and some of the compliance that supports the project.
Good morning, Carl Sanders. Good morning, Carl Sanders, Natural Resources Program Manager. As part of our Azalea Hill plan, we have a number of social trails that Sean had mentioned through the middle of this project that we have been decommissioning. This year, we started that process mostly with signage and fences to dissuade people from using these trails that have an abundance of rare plants on them. There's about four miles of trails that were actively going to be decommissioning throughout this project. Next slide.
So Carl, in that hashed area you showed earlier, four miles.
Approximately.
That's great. That's really good.
And that goes through some of the most sensitive serpentine habitat that has some of our 40-plus rare plants on.
So this is, this is really a big win then to get back an environmental chunk.
Yeah, I don't know the ratio off the top of my head, but yeah, we have a, we have a net gain here in terms of the number of trails that we're putting to bed versus the number that we're improving.
Net gains are a good thing.
Yes, agreed.
And the top photo here, this is actually a wetland feature that's adjacent to Bullfrog Creek that the old trail used to go through. So this was a great area to protect through that decommissioning activity as well.
Project compliance, I'll just give you a brief overview of the work that we do that's compliant with our ISMND for the Azalea Hill project. We use an extensive mitigation and monitoring checklist each year. We do that for all of the contractors, staff, and volunteers that you saw. So there's a checklist of, as this slide shows, examples of Western Ponser turtle surveys that we conduct, red and yellow-legged frog surveys. Each of these helps inform where we work and when we work with the varying staff, contractors, or volunteers. Even with volunteers, they get a training that lets them know what we're doing and how to mitigate or avoid impacts. As part of the ISMND, we have a tree replacement program that's been underway for last year, three to one. We didn't actually have to remove that many trees. Most of our trail alignments were put in place to avoid tree removals. And the trees that we are putting in place, as the slide, the image shows, there are locally collected and generally close to the project site itself as mitigation. Rare plant monitoring has been ongoing. We have contractors helping us with that. We have to do that on a very specific basis for each trail alignment, so we know where and how to avoid impacts to listed species. And then we monitor the impact. We will be monitoring the impacts to those species over time or over the course of this project.
Carl, real quickly on the monitoring piece. So we've got four miles of social trail that are being decommissioned, habitat restoration kind of on one. Are we able to go back in and monitor that area to see if there's been improvements in any of the plant species that were there? Just to be able to show when we do this, what the benefit is.
Yeah, as part of our project, we're going to be monitoring the conditions of the trail throughout all phases over a number of years after we're completed. So we'll be able to document and demonstrate those benefits long-term. Great.
I think this is my last slide, but as I mentioned before, we have Nomad helping us on our mitigation monitoring plan. And each year, we get that approved by the Fish and Wildlife, so we're good for going forward.
I have a question. How do we keep the trails from being re-socialized?
We have to patrol them. So, you know, right now, we're doing signage. It's a careful balance between the amount of work that we actively do to decommission a trail and trying to keep people off. Actively decommissioning could potentially have more impacts to those rare plants that we're trying to protect. So we'll need to increase our enforcement and patrol of those areas. And that's certainly why we have the, you saw the fences and the signage on them that give us the ability to enforce.
The FAA uses a yellow X. That's the sign when you come into an airport. If there's a yellow X on the runway, that means don't land here.
Yeah.
It might be something to think about, something to put on the ground at the beginning. And whatever, I don't, you know, yellow is what they use. But something like that, that physically marks the ground, as opposed to a sign. I saw the signs you had, you know. They're kind of gentleman's signs, you know.
Yeah, and we're also putting in split rail in some cases to dissuade people from that. And the issue we had on the top of Azalea Hill, though, is that there was never really a formal single trail. And people had kind of made these social trails by wanting to explore areas. So by establishing a very, you know, obvious trail that is the, you know, approved trail, we're hopeful that folks will start following that one. But we do have the issue, you know, people do like to explore.
We also try to pick very strategic places to put those fences and signs at intersections or places or at points along our main official route that would dissuade people or let them know that this is, you know, where they ought not be going.
Great. So next steps for 2025, we do have a complicated phase coming up, which is the parking lot. It sounds simple, but we have some rare plants that come out of the parking lot up to the main Azalea Hill. The alignment is going to be difficult to find to avoid those plants. And there's some serious incision in the trail that's creating additional railing that is going to be hard to address due to the rare plant location. So that's going to be a complicated phase that we're working towards, and we're going to need to develop a design for the parking lot itself and then for that approach into the trail. And we'll continue our rare plant monitoring through Phase One to support that. We're continuing our hiking trail work in this next year to try to make that connection from the Bullfrog area up to the top of Azalea Hill, and then we'll be moving towards the parking lot after that. Continuing to do our ongoing volunteer days monthly, as John was mentioning. And then one section of the trail on the Liberty Gulch segment, where it hits the Fisherman's Trail, there are some rare plants through a meadow habitat that we're concerned about widening the trail in that section. So we are looking at strategies for narrowing through there and maybe signing it as kind of a, you know, yield to oncoming traffic situation. So we're coming up with various strategies that might work for that section of the trail, and we're going to have to update our compliance document likely to support that. So we're working on that, and we'll be bringing back a detailed report in the next couple of months to support that.
It's ill-advised to try to move the plants?
Very. They grow in very, very specific soil types.
Reason.
Yeah, and we can't just tell them to go grow where we'd like them to. So it's complicated. So we're, we're working through that one. We also anticipate additional, additional work over the next month or two to kind of a checklist of final things we want to do on the Liberty Gulch segment. And we're hopeful that we'll have that ready to open in the summer of 2025. We anticipate Phase One potentially being completed by 2026. So I think we have an opportunity to open Phase Two and Three on its own and then move to completing that hiking trail and really the parking lot improvement, kiosks, and trail entrance in 2025, 2026. So with that, will take any questions you might have for us?
Director Russell. Director Kush.
Thanks a lot, Sean, Carl, John. Great update. Really good to learn about all the progress there. Just, just two points. Sean, on the timeline for opening up Liberty Gulch, I, it sounds like ensuring protection of the rare plants is right now the primary issue. I wasn't clear if the parking lot reconfiguration is also related to Liberty Gulch.
No, it's not. That's up on Phase One at the Azalea Hill parking area. And so that can work independently on a separate timeline.
Got it. Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving as fast as we can on Liberty Gulch, mostly because I think that allows us to better manage usage when it's open and we can work with the different stakeholders and volunteer groups to maintain and manage that trail legally. So I really, if there's any opportunity to accelerate that process so that we're there before next summer, you know, please, please consider that. I think, I think it's just better for the management of the trail itself. The, the second question I had, you know, the, probably the best exposure I've had to particularly the rare plants that we have in our, in our jurisdiction or within the county is when I've been doing volunteer trail work in other parts of the county, not, not on the watershed. There's been a real effort in some of those activities to educate the volunteers about not just proper trail maintenance procedures, but the surrounding environment and why it's so important to be thoughtful about what we do there. So do, do we see any opportunities to link volunteer management of the trails with, say, Suzanne's volunteer program so that we can also include educational components, broader educational components around, you know, the, the amazing environment and the rare plants that we have in, you know, under our jurisdiction? You know, could we, could we sort of hit, combine, you know, kill a couple of birds with one stone, so to say? Okay, wrong, wrong, wrong analogy there.
Point blue folks might get a little. So I would just note, yeah, our trail volunteer program is in our volunteer program and supported by the staff that work in that program. The interpretation of the rare plants is always something we can continue to refine and improve upon. We do try to have that messaging within our volunteer events, and sometimes it's dependent on the staff that are, you know, supporting that particular one.
That are available.
Their expertise for it. We do rely heavily on our AmeriCorps program and our seasonal staff to run some of those events with our maintenance staff. But we'll take that, that comment back and, you know, work on how we can better kind of inform folks about the natural resources during those activities.
I mean, I, you know, I'd love to see some of these events, you know, branded as both, let's maintain our trails and let's and let's learn more about the environment in, in the watershed, you know, so sort of, yeah, these dual purpose. And, 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 you know, you know, we know now that there are, I'm guessing it's just, season is just starting for mountain biking. There's probably 150 high school kids that are using the watershed two to three times a week now. You know, I think working with the high school teams to make sure that they're contributing to volunteer activities, but also using this as an educational platform for those kids so that they sort of, you know, learn this stuff early on would be, would be beneficial. So yeah, hopefully we can continue to consider that, that, that possibility.
We, we do have an event this Saturday. It's a hybrid event where it's a habitat restoration and a interpretive hike afterwards. So.
Wow.
Weather permitting.
Okay, so I should probably be there. Yeah.
You know, Director Kush, interesting because I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but going towards the development of future stewards for the land that are currently using it for whatever the purpose is, I think is very important. But first, John, Carl, Sean, thank you very much for the update. And also I, you guys are being humble about it. This is a Herculean lift to get it this far where we're at. And so that effort should be acknowledged and it's definitely appreciated to do. And with that, I think this, this project is an opportunity for us to showcase what we're doing. You know, we've heard a lot over the past few months about outreach, public participation, things that are in conflict with, with different user groups based on what they feel is, has been their opportunity to participate in the process. But this allows us to tell the story and get those people to understand. And I say those people, all the users of the watershed to understand what you're doing. And I think that the critical component of this, yes, it's a beautiful new trail. It's incredibly well designed. It's very respective of the, of the watershed lands itself. But it's removing four miles of social trail and reestablishing a really big chunk of, of property that we can now better manage because we've got control of access. And I think that is a very important story to tell. And I'd like to see us, once we do open it up and to support Director Kush saying, if there's an opportunity to accelerate the process, let us know. But I think to follow up, if there's going to be delays in the opening and Liberty Gulch section, please let us know as well. And if there's anything we can do to help push that forward, but let's celebrate this and let's have an event, you know, whether it's a ribbon cutting, whatever we want to do, trail piece for that. But it shouldn't just be to celebrate the trail. It should be to celebrate the fact that we're now better managing a big chunk of land and allowing for various competing interests all to be able to coexist, you know, in a good way. So that's the message I'd like to see coming out of this.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that. I mean, I think consistent with your comments, the effort that has gone into this is, is really so impressive. It's staggering to me, the, the size group we have in the watershed and the ability to do the work continuously that's done there is quite impressive. And yeah, I think a celebration, a ribbon cutting, whatever we do would be great external, but also recognize the internal work and accomplishments as well.
Internal and also for all the collective groups that are participating with their volunteer hours to really be able to do it. Great. Thank you very much. Terry, any public comment on this?
Yes, Larry Minikis, please.
Yes, and to Director Kush's earlier question, Ernest E. Emig was a longtime member of the Tamalpais Conservation Club. And he left a legacy fund that is run by Colin Klaxon, who is over here in Terre-Linda. He's an attorney. There's a map that Ernest drew of Mount Tamalpais. You can see it hand drawn with a circle. And anything in that circle can be used in the fund and not only by MMWD, but anyone that comes forward with a project. And there were years that no one was coming forward and Colin was coming to us going, help me spend this money. So just, just the money's out there to spend every year. We have kiosks at Phoenix Lake and at Lake Lagunitas that were paid with those funds. And also a little history here. I pulled a Chronicle article from 1996 not long ago, which talked about this project as a legacy project in 1996. So there's a lot of history here and I'd like to just acknowledge staff's hard work in a very sensitive area and, and express appreciation for all the work that's been going into this project. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Larry, just, just wanted to clarify. Really appreciate the background. It was Chair Sampson that had asked about the
Oh, oh, oh.
Individual. So I don't want to take credit for that. Yeah. Thank you.
And Vernon Huffman?
Yeah. Hi, Vernon Huffman, Access for Bikes. And it's been a pleasure to help out on this project, particularly the Liberty Gulch section of the project. I've been on four workdays. I'm supposed to be there right now. I'm late. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna fast track it out there. I know Max is counting on the A for B crew today to do some projects and it's been really fulfilling to, you know, to have a stake in the game and feel like you helped improve the environmental situation out there because we've been doing some riprap work. We've been doing that drainage work, getting the water off the trail. So it's not running down the trail for long, long periods of time. I do want to echo Director Kush's comment and concern. Let's open. Liberty Gulch is ready to go. I mean, I know you have a checklist and it's very specific and, but it's being used now socially by all user groups. It, it's appropriate. It's safe. It's, it's environmentally sound. And the news I'm hearing today is really concerning. Summer of 25 is, is really not good news. All the mountain bike teams need that trail to get to Pine Mountain. They, they, the coaches don't want to take those kids up the pavement. It's dangerous. And this trail is ready to go. I mean, how can we navigate this? Can we please look at, at how, you know, if, if there's, if there's amendments to the project description for sequoia compliance, let's do it. Again, there's a sense of urgency here. It's been that photo of the bridge from 2020. Look how much time has gone by. Liberty Gulch is a great trail and it's ready to go. I'll volunteer. I'll get my crew out there. If there's a checklist, if we need to accelerate anything, I'll, I'll put my money where my mouth is and we'll get out there and do it. Terms of the, the, you know, whatever other needs to be done out of the office. I, I just, I don't know. I'm perplexed. That's my concern. It's a safety issue. I want to get off that road and get up to Pine Mountain on the Liberty Gulch Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great. Moving on to item C, the watershed, I'm going to butcher the name here. You could help me out, Sean.
You got it. Jubata grass.
Jubata grass. Thank you, Control.
So Carl and I are going to support this presentation again, and then we're going to have Leah Lord, our natural resource technician, provide you with an update on an important invasive plant management project that we've been working on on the watershed. And this, under our biodiversity, fires and fuels integrated plan, which the district adopted in 2019, prioritizes management of invasive plants and restoration of ecosystem function. And this project really highlights that. And so we come back every year with an annual report on the BFFIP. And this is getting, you know, more granular on a project specific on something that our natural resource tech and our, our folks have been working on for the past couple of years. And so really happy that Leah is going to provide an update on this project for you all today.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. I'm Leah Lord. So I'm a natural resources technician and I work up at Sky Oaks in vegetation management. The natural resources technician is a two-year term position and I was the first one to hold that type of position. And as Sean said, I'm going to be talking about our efforts to restore and control a patch of jubata grass we have on the watershed and how this focused effort more falls under our broader plan of the BFFIP. So I'm going to start off by explaining what exactly jubata grass is and why it's bad. And I'll go over what management actions in the BFFIP relate to this and what restorations, what restoration efforts we're now undertaking. And I also presented a version of this presentation for the California Invasive Plant Council Symposium this fall. CalIPSE is a nonprofit that has a conference every year that gets together professionals to talk about on the ground work and just about collaborations. So pampas grass and jubata grass. Jubata grass is actually one of two very common species you probably see as you drive around California. It's relative. Pampas grass has better name recognition, but the two species are really similar and the names are often used interchangeably. They're both members of the genus Cordidaria and they're both from Southern South America. And they're both considered highly invasive in California. On Mount Tam, you'll see most of our invasions in seeps, straws, the reservoir edges and the rocky cliffs along the coast. And the problem with these plants is they create these large monocultures that choke out native vegetation. And then they compete with the native vegetation for water and resources. And they create a lot of excess dry foliage, which can also be wildfire hazard when they're near roadsides or just population centers. So this map shows all of our occurrences of pampas grass and jubata grass found on the watershed from 2020 up until today. So most of these occurrences are just small, little one to two plants that are easy to eradicate within a few years. But we have a few patches that are quite hefty, more than a hundred plants. And I enlarged the red dots on this map just to show you where these populations actually are because in total, they cover a small area of the watershed, probably about an acre in total. So our BFFIP directs.
How did they get there?
How did it get there? Yeah. So it's a very common plant that people plant in their gardens for landscaping purposes. And the seeds are windblown. So it's likely that a lot of them came in, you'll see like on the southeastern edge, kind of near the, our border there. The wildland urban interface there, they're probably coming up from a lot of residential areas there. And then once it gets in, it starts moving around from there.
How do they, how far can they travel?
I'm not sure about that.
I'm just thinking that maybe in the Wui, we should do something about restricting certain plants to kind of give us a break here.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay. So our BFFIP directs specific vegetation management actions to be taken to accomplish the goals that were set forth in the BFFIP. So this project is covered by three of these management actions and we use them to just provide direction on this complex management situation we found ourselves in and because the management situation, it includes invasive species and it now includes rare plants. So the discovery of this patch that I'm going to talk about today is thanks to our participation in the One Tam EDRR program. EDRR is short for Early Detection Rapid Response, and it's the most important tool we have for dealing with weeds. So in practice, this looks like staff walking roads and trails, looking for priority weeds that are on a list we have. So if they find a new colony, they map it and then they immediately treat it if it can be done in under 15 minutes. And anything larger, we follow up with in a year. EDRR is our most cost-effective tool we have for dealing with weeds because it allows us to catch and treat the weeds early before the population either becomes untreatable, kind of explodes, or just costs a lot more money. And so EDRR is specifically called out in our Management Action 22. It directs that EDR surveys be expanded to include an annual patrol of all roads and 25% of all trails. And to do this, we follow our One Tam EDRR protocol to systematically survey all our trails and roads on a three-year cycle. And our One Tam EDRR program is really important to us because it bands together all the agencies on the mountain to basically defend the mountain from weeds. A lot of our weeds come from adjoining properties. And so to have our neighbors able to also participate in this program and be on the same page as us really helps us and helps everyone on the mountain. So this patch was found in 2019. It was discovered adjacent to the Matt Davis Trail during a regular EDRR survey. And the invaded area is a serpentine seep, which really just shows how the invasive power of jubata grass, that it can invade a serpentine area because serpentine areas are usually quite resistant to a lot of our common invasive species we have here. So manual treatment, we started in 2021 using contractors and we chose to use contractors in the situation because the difficulty of the work and the person hours that would be required. Because to get it out, you have to use picks and you need to cut away all these sharp leaves and really just dig out these big root balls. And we also chose to leave all this biomass on site because hauling 200 mature jubata grasses down a half mile of the Matt Davis Trail would have been a huge undertaking. And then where are we going to put all that biomass? But treatment went really well on this site and we were able to really decrease hours. And this year we were able to switch over to just treating with staff. And we'll keep doing this until there's zero jubata plants detected here for five years in a row, which we have outlined in the BFFIP in Management Action 22 and 24.
Why do they have to be removed?
Sorry?
Why do they have to be removed?
Removed from the site?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, that's what I'm going to talk about next. So it would have been best to remove all the biomass because it's just a large volume of biomass that now is covering this whole patch area. So you can see in this picture, just the absolute, like this is just all the leaves and root balls just covering this whole area that's now just smothering all these plants. So it was great. We were able to really treat this jubata grass, but so now we have these piles, this whole, this just layer of dead leaves that is deep as one to three feet and the plants just aren't able to get through it.
And why don't we burn it?
Why don't we burn it? Yes. So this is in, this is between, on the Matt Davis Trail between West Point Inn and Throck Morton. And it's a very kind of isolated area. I don't know how we would get an engine in to kind of.
There's a lot of. A lot of fuel around that area too. A lot of fuel.
Yeah, it's a very, so it's also right next to a big chaparral area, a place that could get very dry and a fire could take off very easily. So I think it would be a operations.
Larry, I think in, in a perfect world, once we get to treat all that other area, then we'd be able to burn this with a little more confidence. Right now it, that looks like a tinderbox. I wouldn't feel comfortable putting fire on the ground there right now.
And this is a, this report is really, you know, demonstrating that we learn by doing and updating our best management practices as we go. So this is one patch that we've been working on and we've learned some good lessons that Leah is about to hit on for moving into other projects of this type.
You can probably guess my next question. Would a translocating herbicide help you?
In this situation, I don't think so because the issue is all these plants are in the way. So even with a translocating herbicide, we'd still have the biomass issue.
It would probably reduce the labor hours. Right. That would be the benefit.
Well, I, I'm not so much worried about that as I am getting it done. You know, we don't want to wear out you guys, you know.
Absolutely.
If it's too much of a Sisyphean or Herculean task, then, you know, pretty soon it doesn't get done.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that also because this patch wasn't found right away, so it did become really large, but hopefully with a robust EDRR program, we're able to catch these before they become these huge labor intensive things.
And how far is this from the Wui?
It's, oh, from the Wui?
Yeah, just, I'm trying to get a picture on the translocation of these seeds. Of what we might.
They travel pretty far. I mean, we have some of these.
They go with the wind.
They go with the wind. I mean, we have some of this on, on a pipeline in Alpine Lake. So, you know, it's moved from the Wui into the watershed and then one grows and then that one blows. And so it can just be expansive from that.
It, it's, it's apparent to me, at least it's pretty similar to broom. It attacks in areas where broom attacks. It's more competitive. It's more competitive. It's much prettier, obviously, than broom, but it's interesting. Is it possible to bury this stuff?
Massive amount of biomass. So maybe if you had an excavator. But right on a trail where we're hand doing it, likely not reasonable. And a much larger impact. And then, you know, we get into cultural resource issues and we want to be respectful of how we, you know, excavate on the watershed. So with that, the benefit of going through this is, you know, there are rare plants that we're trying to protect while we manage these invasives.
Yeah, so with the treatment of this patch, while I was visiting it last year, I found two, just two individual Mount Tam thistles growing there. And Mount Tam thistle is endemic to our mountains, so it only grows on Mount Tam. And it's ranked as fairly threatened and it's specifically called out in the BFFIP for us to protect it. And to improve the habitat that species like this habituate on our land. So we have a few problems with this site. There's a thick layer of biomass. There's nowhere for the Mount Tam thistle to grow. And the other natives really aren't able to grow here either. So we tried three things last year and this year to try to help mitigate this issue. The first was onsite seeding. That didn't really work because nothing germinated. And we didn't really need more plants here. We just, they were there. They were just being smothered. We also tried caging the existing natives. That's the photo on the right. It's kind of hard to photograph because everything's just brown. But we used natural materials from onsite to just kind of give the natives that were there a little boost and protection from the deer. But the main thing that seems to really have worked is piling the biomass. So creating these piles that, moving all this biomass into larger piles to kind of lessen the footprint and make these thinner areas where the natives and the Mount Tam thistle can actually come through. And this all comes back to adaptive management. It's an important part of this situation and a lot of the situations we deal with and in vegetation management. So we needed to evaluate our initial weed treatments in order to create strategies to deal with this new problem of the biomass and of the rare plant we have. And we're going to need to continue to reassess if these piles are working. And whether they're supporting the Mount Tam, whether we're now supporting the Mount Tam thistle at the site. And we're likely going to need to come back for a few more years to repile this biomass as it begins to decompose.
Have you considered a helicopter?
A helicopter? We have not considered it. I think that could work, but I'm concerned about, I guess, the cost.
Each site, as we, as we scale out to these other sites, we'll have different access opportunities. So as we learn more about the piling, there might be opportunities for us to pile and burn it. So each site, as we move through to manage these other sites, will provide other opportunities and other constraints.
I just recalled the marijuana when we moved it with the helicopter.
Yeah.
Yeah, luckily, this is not on the scale of that issue.
Well, that might make it more bite-sized though, cost-wise. I mean, it might be five grand or ten grand once and it's out of your hair. Good.
I don't want to rule out pile burning either. I mean, Leah and I are going to be revisiting this site with some additional prep, timing. I think there's still the possibility of pile burning these sites.
So we have three sites on the watershed where we have large patches. So that means at least eleven active adult jubata or pampas grasses growing. So what we're hoping to do is take these lessons from the Matt Davis Patch and apply them to these new patches so we can have greater success. So what do we do with this biomass? Is there a way for us to get it out in certain situations? And our newest patch down in the southeast corner is below Hukui Koo. So the same sort of area and it's very similar to the Matt Davis Patch. But it was also discovered by a One Tam EDRR surveyor. So very lucky that they caught this patch a lot earlier than the Matt Davis Patch. So hopefully we will have better success with that. So in conclusion, our invasive management program isn't just about killing weeds. Our ultimate goal is to create communities where our native plants and wildlife are thriving and are a part of our healthy water cycle. And to do this, we use the BFFIP to guide our management decisions and help make clear our priorities when it comes to our restoration and vegetation management.
Great, thank you, Leah. With that, we'll take any questions you might have about this project and thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, not only for the work, excuse me, but for also for the very informative presentation.
In Monty's words, I echo that. I think it was very interesting. Don't give up on us, okay? We can help you here. So there, while I appreciate your desire to keep within the budget, sometimes things are more complicated and need a special hand. So keep that in mind, that, you know, I understand you may not want to spend that money there. I got it. And as far as pile burning goes, you know, the helicopter could be used to pick it up and move it to someplace where it can be burned, huh? And then it's out of your hair. You know, it's a one-time expense or maybe more than once, but at least one time that I can see. And then you move forward. And I find that funny about your comment about not just pulling weeds, because of course, some people consider that thistle a weed, huh?
Some thistles are weeds, yes, but we're lucky to have many native thistles.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Leah. I learned a lot on this presentation. Really appreciate it.
Just another thank you. So I appreciate it and appreciate all the continued work. Terry, public comment?
Yes, Mr. Larry Menakis.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know that jubata is a really tough plant to get rid of. And we have a lot of invasives on the watershed. Some of you know that we've been doing work for years in the Bill Williams Canyon to rid it of or at least reduce broom in that area. But what I want to point out at the very south end of Phoenix Lake, where Bill Williams enters, there's a patch of echium that has taken hold there. And that's also an invasive. It's used in gardens. But we've noticed it and next to it is a small isolated patch of broom. So it's two for one. It's where it's sort of a mud flat in Phoenix Lake, where the water, when it's really high, comes in there. Otherwise, it stays just muddy and this plant has taken hold and we've noticed it there. And would love to see it removed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no further speakers?
Great. Moving on to item D, Watershed Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study, update regarding stewardship and visitor facilities.
So this, the update that we're going to give today, we're really going to focus in on our stewardship, visitor outreach and facilities improvements under the Watershed Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study. We've reported out a lot on, in the last, you know, previous watershed committees about this planning document. And I'll remind you that we developed a number of strategic opportunities and organized them under different themes. And we've been advancing those since that document was approved. Just some planning background, right? This was really conceptualized as an outcome of the E-Bike CAC back in 2020. We held a number of public meetings for that process and then individual stakeholder meetings as well. We went through a very large planning process to get community input on the recreation and future of recreation and stewardship on the mountain over since June of 2022. During that period, we met individually with various stakeholder groups as well to really bolster the input we were getting. And then we brought a final document to the board for approval. And that gave us some guidance to advance some strategic opportunities. So in that document, we had identified some of our foundational programs around wildfire, wildlife docent programs that we have been running for a number of years. And in that document, we identified ways that we could enhance them and we've been working with our volunteer program to do such. One of the ways that we've been improving our yellow-legged frog docent program is not just by increasing the trainings that we're providing to get more docents on the ground, but also pairing it with a TAM van. So that we're engaging folks at multiple locations along the trails during the seasons of yellow-legged frogs to help folks understand the importance of them. We've also been increasing our training for our turtle observers and packaging that data to help the state with its understanding of the current state of pond turtles throughout California. The Marin Mammal Watch has been an ongoing camera initiative that we've been doing with the One Tam Partners. There was a backlog of thousands of photographs of wildlife that the district and other One Tam partners really invested heavily over this last year to get us caught up. And now we're finally caught up after multiple years of not being caught up with that program. And we're continuing to collect data with all those cameras and download that data periodically. The Tamil Pius B Lab is a program that's been running for a number of years. And some of the evolution of that is to make it a little bit more like the docent programs where you train folks up and then do the community science collections out in the field. And so those improvements have happened as well, as well as making that program align with kind of national standards that are being used to understand bee populations. We've also been moving forward with our trail stewardship efforts, as John mentioned in the Azalea Hill presentation, with monthly volunteer events. And these are some of the trails that we've done work on. We had some great participation from school groups, from the Cal Academy, from our bike community, from A4B or MCBC. As well, we had a great watershed aide that had connections with the running community. And she started engaging those folks and doing some trail maintenance as well. And that was kind of a new group we were engaging through this program. And we intend to continue to increase the number of programs or days that we're doing on the watershed in the coming years to help not just with the pace and scale of our trail maintenance, but also to improve the engagement. And we definitely heard the comment about how we can build stewardship into that and connect with mountain bike clubs and high school teams as well. In regards to engagement, a little bit more broader, this is, you know, how do we bring people to the watershed or bring the watershed to them? And that's happening through the library program that we participate in with One Tam, as well as the Star Academy, which is a partnership with the Marin Community College. One Tam has been targeting their outreach in the canal and the Marin City areas. And we've been able to bring these other groups and use the watershed as a space for them to gather and meet and learn about the natural resources that are there and the service that the district provides from a water resource perspective. One thing that we identified in our strategic, or in our feasibility study, was an opportunity for a ranger program to kind of broaden a little bit, as well as developing a ranger trainee program to improve workforce development in that career sector or path. And so we had our natural resource trainees actually start attending an interpretation training. That's kind of in line with how state parks and national parks trains up some of their rangers and is helping us, you know, better engage with our visitors on the mountain. And that is supportive of what our rangers have launched this last year, which is kind of a quarterly ranger interpretive offering. So we've been doing historical hikes at West Peak. We've been doing some guided hikes around our forestry work and our prescribed firework. We did a bird walk around Bon Tempe a week or two ago. And then we did a aviation crash site visit with the historical club and our rangers led that hike. And our rangers are just a real wealth of knowledge. And so allowing them to further develop their training to support this kind of outreach is really, you know, a benefit to the community and to the watershed. And we see a lot of opportunity here as we move forward. And we've also developed new self-guided resources. So if folks don't want to attend a scheduled event, they can download a self-guided tour and they can learn about some of the forestry work that we're doing around Lake Lagunitas to protect that water supply or some of the prescribed firework that we've done at Rock Springs. Now, one of the major things we identified in that feasibility study was an update to our visitor map and an opportunity to create that as a geo-located map. So that's something that we just completed. And one of the key updates that we wanted to make sure people had information about when they're visiting the watershed is restrooms and water fountains. So that was added to the map. We've also made some adjustments to the trails that have been improved since the last time this map was updated. This is now available on our website for folks to download and use. And then we created this as a geo-enabled map. So if you use the Avenza app, you can download our watershed map now and you'll be geo-enabled. And this was a tool and strategy that we thought about in terms of helping people understand where they are on the watershed so they don't get lost and hopefully reduce that call for service that our rangers do get from time to time about how to get someone out of a location that they don't know about.
Yeah, and that's important because Avenza will work with or without cellular connection, which is, which is really important.
It's great for that. And then we also heard that we wanted to put a QR code on the map. So you can see the bottom left corner, there's a QR code. And I'll show you what that links up to. Our comms group was really thoughtful about how to utilize this QR code concept. We heard that we wanted to point people to the Mount Tam Watershed Fund to give them an opportunity to donate. And our comms group also saw an opportunity to connect those folks with other visitor information, such as opportunities to volunteer on the watershed or a link to our visitor map and the Avenza tool that you can use. And then just broader watershed information around planning work that we're doing for recreation and stewardship. And I think this is going to be a real tool that we can use, not just on the map, but also on some of the kiosks as we start improving those. And just recognizing that people like to engage with information in new ways and being thoughtful about how we do that as we move into our kiosk development.
Sean, quickly on the kiosk piece, when we're replacing them, I'm assuming we're checking to see if there's cellular connection in the areas we're placing them?
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So watershed facilities, you know, we have a light touch on the landscape up on the watershed. You know, we have roads and trails. We do have some visitor services that we provide in terms of facilities. And some of the things that we identified that we could update are some of the water fountains in the Lake Lagunitas or kind of the old spigot style. And we wanted to put in some of these kind of more, you know, the dog bowl, the water fountain for drinking and the water, the water bottle filler. So we purchased three of these and we'll be installing them in the Lake Lagunitas area. We're also going to eventually install one on the concrete pipe road where the concrete pipe tanks are going or the Pine Mountain tanks are going. We also have purchased wildlife, wildlife-proof trash receptacles in recent years. Because we've seen, you know, more bears coming into the area and actually getting into trash in the community and on the watershed. So one of these improvements our rangers identified was trying to expand the number of wildlife-proof receptacles that we have. And so that's an ongoing initiative. We also identified a bike fix-it station in the Lake Lagunitas picnic area would be beneficial. So we've purchased that and it's yet to be delivered, but that'll be installed as soon as it is. And then we did do a new bench on the Azalea Hill and Memorial of Roger Roberts. And that was installed about two weeks ago, up on the top and has a great vista point from there. We've got some planned kiosk updates over the next year. The first one we're going to develop the messaging for is the Leo T. Cronin Fish Viewing Area. And we really want to highlight the recent restoration work that the district is doing out there and get that installed before the summer. Because come summer, we're going to be doing active work in that part of the stream in our second phase of Lagunitas Creek Restoration Project. So it's a great opportunity to tell that story and think about the broader story of the history of fish in that watershed and the district's involvement as a water purveyor there too. So we've been thinking a lot about accessibility and this was a key piece of our feasibility study as well and the strategic opportunities. We've been having ongoing conversations, really led by Marin County Parks and Open Space and other One Tam Partners, about how we can improve access for various folks with mobility disabilities. And so one of the concepts is, and there was a training and workshop around these, these mobility devices called terrain hoppers. And Marin County Parks has purchased one, is doing some testing of it in terms of how it could be used on various trails. The district and other One Tam partners are interested in continuing that collaboration and thinking about the logistics and what a program might look like for people to be able to reserve these if there's a vent and be able to utilize them from time to time. And we'll also be kind of assessing the broader accessibility on the watershed. We do have a fishing area that's accessible and we have some improvements so that we know that we can make within our Lagunitas picnic area. And so we're coming up with a short list of things that we might be able to do over the next year or two to support accessibility.
What's different? It's called a terrain hopper. What does that mean?
That's just the branded name of it.
I understand.
It's an electric.
Quad, sorta.
Right, it only goes five miles an hour. It's an electric wheelchair essentially that.
Electric.
Yes, somebody helps you into and then it's able to navigate some various terrain types that you would not be able to do in a traditional wheelchair. So in summary, you know, we're continuing to enhance engagement opportunities through our wildlife docent programs. And our volunteer program is really exceptional and continuing to evolve as we rethink about stewardship on the mountain. We're continuing to scale up our monthly trail volunteer offerings. We see a lot of opportunity there and One Tam engagement has just blossomed in recent years. And we really see the mountain and our facilities being a key point of access for various community groups. We're offering quarterly ranger interpretive hikes. Those are on our volunteer calendar to let folks know when they are. When we're building an email list to notify folks around those, our ranger trainees will be in integrated. Um, when we're building an email list to notify folks around those, our ranger trainees will be in, in, integrated into that. Um, as they begin to gain a deeper understanding of the watershed. Um, and we're updating our watershed visitor map that's now live on our website. We'll use that QR code on some of our kiosks where it's appropriate. And we're advancing the facility improvements that we talked about, as well as um, thinking around the longer-term strategy that we had outlined in the recreation feasibility study. So with that, we'll take any questions that you might have on, on this update.
Great. Another, another example of all the, all the activity going on in the watershed. So thank you for that. Director Russell. Director Kush.
Yeah, thanks for that update, Sean. Um. I think I'm, I'm still a little um, hung up on, 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 you know, maximizing engagement with heavy users. Particularly now the mountain bike teams as they ramp up for season. I know I've heard from some teams that they have met with rangers on occasion. So rangers are doing interpretive work with the teams as they, you know, um, start to use the watershed. Do we have any policies on how we manage team access to the watershed?
Yeah, so there's a permit system for groups over twenty. Uh, excuse me. The mountain bike teams are permitted under one permit um, to access watershed. And as part of that permit condition, we put in there a couple of years ago that they would, each team would meet with rangers to talk about the policies that the district has. To help them be good stewards of not just their recreational opportunities, but of the watershed itself. Um, so there, the permit is the, the controlling mechanism that we have for those um, activities.
And are we enforcing an, like an annual, like a meeting or is?
Yeah, so that's an annual permit.
That's an annual.
Reapply every year. They pay one fee as a group. Um, and then we try to schedule those meetups with them before the season starts. And then my understanding is through their teams, they get, you know, their own education around recreation and, you know, best management practices there.
Right, and, and they actually, I think, get some team points if they uh, for volunteer for trail maintenance. So providing more of those opportunities for them to earn points.
Yep.
On the watershed would, would coincide well with the increased volunteer um, program. Um, yeah, great. I, I, yeah, I think um. Ensuring that they are complying with that uh, ranger meeting requirement. Would be good. Thank you.
Larry, did you?
Yeah, um, question. Would it make more sense to have them pay in hours than in dollars? You mentioned there's a fee. I- is it like fifty bucks or it's like five hundred or?
Yeah, I think, I think there's like twelve teams covered under one permit. Um, and I think the, the league pays the fee and it's consistent with what we charge anyone for any type of activity.
Which is.
It's about five hundred dollars a year.
Five hundred.
Um, the idea of, I think the permit is, is good to have as a, a fee based. That gives uh, you know, conversation back and forth with us, with their administrative staff. But it'd be interesting to talk to their teams around how they can just make some commitment to volunteer opportunities.
Or we could ask for more.
Or we could establish kind of an ongoing annual like team of, you know, volunteer month or something that works for their schedules. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth thinking about.
Great. Um, thank you for moving the plaque for Roger Roberts forward and that view was pretty, pretty well chosen. So very appropriate for that. Has there been a thought at all about um, a virtual tour of subsections of the watershed? You know, something like the, the burn area, you know, or area that's a little bit harder to access. And we have some drones now. We have the potential to do it. It'd be interesting. I mean, I think if you start throwing it out of house, it might escalate. But if there's some opportunity, it might be a pretty good.
Yeah, I think.
Chance to do that.
Especially with some of our forestry restoration work, we can think about the messaging that we're putting out. I think the um, self-guided tour provides a great, you know, the content is there. And we've actually got some pretty unique drone capabilities within our engineering group and the technology they use. So we can talk to our comms group about that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I think, you know, the self-guided one is, is pretty neat as well. People can do their own thing. But when you talk about that expanding access, especially with the ADA um, component, that'd be pretty neat for someone else to experience that same.
Right.
Component to that. And so, and thank you very much for the access, continued access for ADA. Um, it's an important group not to forget about, especially so close to the mountain. So with that, Terry, any public comment?
There are none.
Great. So moving on to, thank you very much both. Um, moving on to item number five, just one que- um, clarification. The word tentatively, I think we can remove that now. Great. Excellent.
Oh, okay, yes. Yes, we can remove, we can remove tentatively. But um, the next uh, watershed committee meeting is March twentieth at nine thirty.
Great. And go ahead, join the meeting.
Thank you.